Okay, I'm Edie Winfeymer for Select Women. I called this town, this Board of Select Women meeting to order at 6:31 PM. I'm joined by select person Amanda Thompson and selectman Steve Paul is not joining us tonight. He's on vacation. Okay, um, public comment? Public comment?
Just state your name.
Yes.
Minutes.
Yeah.
Address?
Denver, North, just, uh, address 117 Peak Mountain Drive. Had a question predominantly for the Board of Selectmen with regard to first, the playground. I see that there is in our social media, there is a plea for further funding. I was aware that we had fully paid for the playground and now I see that there is a request for funding beyond what the purchase price was. And it appears as though that I believe we raised close to eighty or ninety thousand dollars to acquire the underlying playground, but it sounds like what's being put out there by the Parks and Recs is asking for six thousand dollars and making it sound like this is going to be the purchase price for the playground as opposed to accomplishing what we've already done with the businesses. We're asking for business contribution, but the businesses have basically contributed thousands of dollars. I'm just curious with regard to who's, who's in charge of that and who do I talk to to find out what they're, what it's all about, why they're still advertising in the park and rec and what they're reporting to you guys with regard to that. Cause I do know that the playground's already been delivered to the town. We already bought it. We paid for it.
Right. It is public comment time, but I don't mind answering. Um, we do have money for the playscape that's paid for. It's delivered. It's paid, it's, um, fully paid for. The extra money I talked to Alicia, our director of Park and Rec and the extra monies for additional add-ons that the commission would like to put on in the installation of those add-ons, but the main playscape itself is paid for.
Okay. Cause they don't make it look like it's just for add-ons to the, to the system that's already blocked. I just wanted to point that out.
Yep. I will clarify it in Talk Turkey.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Um, I have to put a, um, speaker over there so they can't hear it. Okay. Next on the agenda is, I don't have any correspondence. Wait for Amanda to get back. Are the minutes from our February 12th meeting? I'll just need, need a motion for those. Um, I will make a motion to approve our minutes from February 12th, 2025. Everybody else is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's just me. Um, okay. Old Business, Shared Services, um, I don't really have any new updates with that. Sewer update. I mentioned I would give a sewer update, whatever I had at each meeting. What's the only technology at the beginning of the meeting? Okay. Not my forte. All right. Um, so I'll just give where we're at with our billing right now. Our February MDC monthly bill, our current bill that we owe each month is seventy-six thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. An additional payment we have, which is part of the three-year payment plan, uh, we have two years remaining on it, is nineteen thousand, um, I missed a comma. It's about nineteen thousand dollars. So this is a total of ninety-six thousand three hundred and forty dollars. We did receive verbal permission after a request to MDC to put in six-month hold on the payment plans going forward. So we didn't written approval of this hold until we get some meter readings back and, um, we're working, we're doing a study now on the sewer system. We did put our own meters in several meter pits and we pulled them out or DPW pulled them out a couple of days ago and we're just waiting for readings to come in from those. So right now we were, we have a hold on our MDC payments until we get to the bottom of this overcharging. Just a teeny bit of, I've gone through this before, but our current bill is seventy-six thousand dollars with MDC. It was about, um, fifteen thousand for years and years and MDC sent us a bill with actual readings instead of estimated readings back to the beginning of 2022. So that's what the payment plan was that we're paying back. It was a seven hundred and ten thousand dollar bill that they sent us. And the actual readings are now seventy-five thousand instead of fifteen thousand a month. So we know there's a problem, obviously. I've been working on it for three years. So that's where we're at with that. Um, CAA, we do still get bills from them. CAA is Connecticut Airport Authority. We have a meter pit where our sewers and water go through, which MDC owns, but it goes through and, um, we share it with CAA. MDC bills CAA and CAA bills us. So we did have, um, right now, our current monthly bills with CAA, they fluctuate between twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we do pay that every month. That's our current bill with them. And we know there's potentially, hopefully, an issue with that meter as well. Hopefully these aren't our real billings that we're going to do for the future. So that's where, that's the sewer update. FY26 budget update. The general government and Board of Education are continuing to work on fiscal year 2026 budgets. At February 18th Board of Finance meeting, the Board of Finance gave preliminary directives to the Board of Ed and General Government. The Board of Ed was given a 4.1% increase and General Government was given a 2.5% increase. Draft budgets will be presented to the Board of Finance by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education on March 18th. The Board of Finance will give further budget directives to the boards on April 9th for the Budget Public Carrying, which will be held on April 23rd with the town meeting scheduled for May 2nd and a potential referendum in early or mid-May. So right now our FY25 budget is five million, six hundred and eight thousand. A two and a half percent increase for General Government would bring us to five million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. Plus we're looking to take one hundred thousand dollars out of the capital plan to put it back into our operating budget. And so it would be about five point eight million, five point eight four eight. That's our budget update. Okay. So we have appointments for, this is new business, 6A, for our Connecticut's 150th birthday, which is in 2026. We've been directed by the state to create a committee and have some events happen in East Scramby, which is very exciting. So the last celebration I was a part of was our 150th. Did I say 150th? I meant the 250th of the United States. The last one I was a part of was 150, feels like a hundred years ago, um, was East Scramby's birthday. So we were established in 1858 and this, this celebration we had was in 2008. So we dug out a book from, from, that's where all the turkey came from. We dug the hook out from the annals of Scramby today and, um, had quite a big committee. So right now we have about five people interested in being on this committee. It's an open committee until we feel like we have enough people. Um, there is minority representation criteria. So right now with the people we have on it, it's fine. We'd love more members. Um, and then it's an ad hoc committee. So once the 250th celebration is over, we can put an end to this committee, obviously. So right now we have, the members are, I'm by default a member, but I'd like to join it. So it would be me, Amanda, Bob Raven Seager, Morgan Bengal from Newgate Prison and Nancy Moody, she's on our Historical Society. So I just need a motion to appoint all of us.
I'll make a motion to appoint the members of the ad hoc, um, 250th Celebration Committee.
I'm in favor. Are you in favor?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay. Welcome to our 250th ad hoc committee or celebration committee. So if anyone else, else would like to join, please reach out.
And just, you know, now is a good time to join. There is one more grant application coming up in May. So this is really the time that we want to be planning and having some substantial ideas because then we can put in for the grant money in order to actually execute these plans. So if you're interested, please don't hesitate. This is probably the most important time to figure out those plans.
We're actually quite ahead. I looked at our 150th planning and we didn't get a committee going until September of that year. So we're good. Few months ahead of time. But it's always good to start early and we are trying to rein in some help from the schools, just some interest from the schools and even other clubs and committees who'd like to participate would be great. Okay. January, coming to the slide. Okay. For the month of January, we had 11 motor vehicle accidents, eight alarm calls, one assault, one criminal mischief, one disturbance, one domestic incident, three fires, one larceny, 41 medical assists, three suspicious incidents, 12 traffic, traffic stops, 833 patrol checks and a total of 1,002 calls for service. Thank you. All right. We're going to move along to our landfill solar project. Do you want to give a brief of what we, uh, what you did over the past couple of weeks?
Sure. Sure. Um, screen here.
Well, while you're getting that set up, just for those of you who don't know, this is Adam Tiff and he works for Titan Energy, which is a company that, um, I'm going to stay around now.
CMM?
CCM.
CCM.
Connecticut Council of Municipalities.
Yeah.
We're a member town. Um, they hired Titan Energy in order to represent towns like East Scramby, smaller towns, um, in order to do projects like putting in the solar when we don't have the, the manpower to do it, being a smaller town. So, um, they had already done the RFP and the vetting, so, uh, we were able to have Titan Energy represent the town of East Scramby. So he went through and set up the RFP for the solar project and had the results to share with us tonight.
Yeah. Thanks Amanda. Appreciate everybody being here tonight and, um, we look forward to Q and A about the project. So as Amanda said, my job is to run the RFP for the town to select a vendor, uh, fact-check proposals, make sure that the town's strategy, positioning this project in the incentive programs is sound and then carrying it through to, uh, you know, all the steps involved with actually building the project. So, um, we're really here, going on the town side of the table, trying to make sure that we're selecting a vendor that's most capable and getting the most financial value from the process that you can. And we do this work under, as Amanda said, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. So really municipal solar, municipal solar procurement and project management is exactly, you know, what we're, what we do. And, um, it was a good fit for East Scramby's need and what we provide. Let's skip over some of the general fluff about Titan here and some of this, obviously this is not going to be very useful for everybody. So let me just give.
Want to share a screen with the people at home? There's a bunch of people on.
Okay.
Possible. You would have to log in, right?
Yeah. Let me see here. Is there an invite for the, probably log on to.
Presentation, you could share it from your computer. Hypothetically, hypothetically, that could happen. Let's see. My, my technology under pressure. I don't know how fast.
Yeah. My internet's being a little funky here too.
Is it?
Yeah.
There's like 12 people on my site. I can't, I, I'll make it.
I'm trying to connect here.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Through the towns, the wifi here for some reason, it is not particularly cooperating. But a lot of this, a lot of this I can speak to.
Okay.
Folks are here, you know, you know, instead of having to just read, you know, from the screen, I want to try to keep this as conversational as possible. It's just this, this material is put together with the intention that, uh, for folks who didn't get the live presentation, that they would have context for what we did and how we did it. So don't worry so much about the screen. I can, I can speak to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we supposed to be able to read that?
No.
Okay. That's what he's saying. Yeah.
No.
Cause I can't even decipher the letters. Yeah.
And don't worry about it.
Okay.
You're getting, you're getting the straight from the horses back here. So.
But we'll put it, we'll put it up on the town websites if you want to reference it after. Like you said, it's really more helpful for people who aren't here at the meeting if they're looking at it later, cause it lays it out really well, but Adam.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't me.
Yes. It smashes you.
I can't read it.
Okay.
Um, so we put out the RFP for Solar Development Services for the cap land. We got four responses back, um, for the project. You know, my job with writing the RFP is really to make sure that the bids that come in, they're all standardized. There's, uh, you know, like for like is possible. Obviously some variations always, you know, with standing, just everybody's going to approach the project a little differently, but we want to try to make everybody, you know, kind of view it the same way. So as we're comparing bids, we have a good basis to say, okay, yes, this is clearly the most favorable, least favorable, et cetera. Um, and we also ask folks to take into account some specific instructions related to the incentive programs that are ultimately going to support the project. One of the things that trips people up when I try to explain this, and I think I've gotten better at it over the years, um, but what we would ultimately do here is we select a vendor in a project. The project then gets bid into the ever-source program that's going to support it for a 20-year period. So on the one hand, we're going to be talking about the bid that we ran to try to select a vendor, but as we move through the, the steps here, we're ultimately going to take that project and then bid it into the ever-source, the relevant ever-source program. So you may be hearing me talk about bids a lot, using that word, but I'll try to keep a real clean distinction between the bid that we're running here and the future bid, should the town decide to enter into one of these programs, how that would all play out. Um, so, you know, we did give instructions for folks about, you know, some assumptions we'd like them to make about how they will bid into the incentive program in the future. Um, and there are some different reasons to kind of go one over the other. Um, and just generally without getting too much into the weeds of, of why just yet. Um, there are two programs. One's called the Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions Program, NRES. I'm going to use that acronym. The other is Shared Clean Energy Facility Program, SKEF. They're very similar in the sense that it's, it's a competitive program that we have to take our project and then bid into. And by that I just mean, when we enter the program, this project is going to be selling power directly to ever-source for 20 years at a fixed price. So that's, you know, the financial arrangement. It's not, uh, just like a merchant generator plant that's going to sell into the wholesale market. It's not a, a plant that's going to create power for the town per se. Energy's going back to the power grid. Ever-source is buying it at a fixed cost. Solar developers like that model because, um, it's a fixed contract for 20 years, so their cash flows are very predictable. Um, that's what enables them to write a lease payment for the town at a fixed price. So there's no market risk for the, for the town. There's no operational risk. It's just the town is allowing the solar developer to come in, build, own, operate the asset. And in exchange for that, we get a lease payment for 20 years. Developers don't love the fact that it's a bid-in program because that means lowest bids are the ones that are selected first. So it's super competitive. We need to be smart about how we bid into the NRES or SKEF program. That's part of my job too, also to help the, guide the town through that process and ensure that, you know, all this effort results in a project that gets selected because you can imagine East Scramby is not the only town in the state trying to get into this program. Um, you know, it's, uh, it's just been very, very competitive since both programs, um, came about. SKEF is in its fifth year, or it's in its sixth year now, just wrapped up its fifth year. And NRES is just wrapped up its fourth. So, um, we have a lot of history to say like, okay, what's been successful, what hasn't been in the past, so we can try to gauge where we need to be in the program to be successful. But, um, part of my job here is to take on the burdens of that complexity and bring strategies on the table for the town that's going to work. But suffice to say for the actual RFP results, we gave folks a high and a low and a some, you know, to, so they can peg their number to something. Otherwise what happens is you get everybody making different assumptions and there's no way to actually compare this to each other. So we gave a high and a low, um, for the sake of comparison. And again, ultimately the decision between SKEF and NRES, uh, comes down to, you know, which program is more lucrative for the town. Obviously that's a big deal, um, in which is kind of your easier path to getting a project permitted and, you know, selected and all that stuff. So, um, we may not dive into every nook and cranny of that detail now, but just, you know, as a general process overview of where, what we've done and what our thought process is. Step one, try to identify a vendor that's going to be a good fit. Step two, come up with a strategy for entering into one or two of these programs. And that's essentially what we can't see there. Um, tries to give some context for, you know, the process that we followed. So this just landing page here, again, you probably can't see that. I can try to zoom in a little more. I don't want to zoom in so far. It's not useful. Okay. This is one of the rare slides that I guess you can actually see from the, from the screen. Um, so in going through the bids, a couple of things that we look for, we try to standardize them as much as possible, as I said before, but inevitably everybody's going to take, you know, a little bit of artistic license or, you know, they're going to interpret the site a certain way. And, you know, my job again is sort of identify what would work, what wouldn't reel people back in who maybe strayed a little, you know, off the reservation. Um, and just again, try to make sense of the numbers that come in and prioritize which vendors got the best pricing, is the best strategy, is the most capable experience, et cetera. Because I think one of the things that's very important about Connecticut landfill development is experience matters. There's a lot of companies that are homegrown in the state that do really great work, um, have experience with landfills in Connecticut in particular, and the two permitting bodies that are responsible for giving, you know, the yay or nay. Um, those two being the Connecticut Siting Council and DEEP, the Department of Environment, Energy and Environmental Protection. So one thing I like to make everybody very, you know, aware of right out of the gate is that DEEP and the Siting Council have, you know, absolute, uh, you know, say over this project. No developer can build anything, especially on a cap landfill unless those two bodies get their okay. And it's a rigorous process, you know, that, uh, in terms of, you know, you talk timelines and things and, you know, how long does this take? And, you know, um, the incentive, getting selected in SKEF and NRES is the first hurdle because without that you really don't have anything. But once that happens, the, the review process for the Siting Council in DEEP can take a year. It's, it's a robust process. It's time intensive, it's costly. But at the end of it yields, you know, the right oversight to make sure that the project is well-responsible, which is obviously good. So with this table here, and this is a point that I made to you both earlier as we were discussing some of these results, is that there's really, the metric that I look for in evaluating these projects is less.
Less.
Yeah, less of it. Less the, the kind of nominal year one financial value back to the town and more this middle column here, the lease rate per megawatt of installed solar. If, you know, you think about like, what can we look at in people's proposals where, you know, it tends to be a good baseline or a good metric to gauge one against the other. I like this one a lot because what can happen if you just focus on the nominal, you know, stated value of the project, you know, per year for the town, is that sometimes you get bidders that are proposing a site that's just way too big. It won't get permitted and I know it. They maybe know it, I don't know. Um, but with these lease rates, the way they're generally written is per megawatt of solar installed. So what can happen is a big project that is unrealistically large can appear to be the best option when in fact, you know, I want to know like, okay, so what size is realistic here? And relative to that, what is the highest lease rate per megawatt that the town can get? In this case, Green Skies, Clean Energy, they're a North Haven-based company. Um, I personally felt that their design was the most realistic of the bunch. There's some reasons, I can go through that.
Which line is that?
Which one is that?
The green one?
Down is that?
The bottom, the bottom.
Could you maybe change a color or something?
We just, I was carrying.
Yeah. I think what's a little bit problematic too is that that screen has, my screen doesn't really look like that.
Oh, it has texture.
It's kind of a blue tint.
It has texture.
A little bit of, yeah. I'm not sure that's kind of, everything's blue on the screen.
Look up to me.
But they're paying, they're offering to pay the highest lease rate per megawatt. And the reality is every solar developer is going to want to build the biggest system possible. Nobody's going to want to go artificially small with one exception. One bidder decided to take it into a smaller project, but it's, it's aside the point. For reasons I didn't particularly agree with, and I don't think they're really beneficial for the town. But based on codes, setbacks, et cetera, the Siting Council in DEEP are going to tell you how big you can make this thing. So I know what criteria they're looking for and how they're going to judge these projects. And the, you know, the kind of two that were, you know, quote unquote, neck and neck here, Kier Sage and Green Skies. Green Skies has the higher lease rate per megawatt. So the more solar that gets built, the more money the town's going to make. And also, um, with the Kier Sage proposal, their system size is about 20% too big as far as my calculation goes. So if you reduce the system size, then all of a sudden that net payment that comes back to the town falls. And, you know, it's just one of these things that if you don't necessarily know what to look for in these proposals, you might not be able to say, oh, this is overdesigned and here are the reasons.
So is there an opportunity to, do you normalize them, size of the site? So you have a better comparison, you know, say this, you know, so that you can say apples to apples.
Yeah. So that lease rate per megawatt is really like the best, the best metric if you just want to bracket stack everybody together and who's offering the most value for the town. Making the assumption that everybody's going to want to build as big as they can, but the sys, the, the site can't support the, the, the size that Kier Sage, just in this instance, was proposing. Green Skies is a much more realistically sized system. And even with that, their, their offer is neck and neck with what Kier Sage was offering too. So, um, if Kier Sage, if, and again, I know you can't see this. If their off, if their system size came down, kind of back down to earth, their lease rate would fall by about 20% or so too, which would put Greens, put them well below Green Skies. I think, maybe this is just a way of saying, I think it's an overinflated offer.
Yeah.
Cause that system won't get.
Yeah. I'm just not sure why that doesn't just get, you know. I, I understand that you understand it, but for our purposes, it almost seems like that we're normalized and say, okay, assumption is this is the largest site that we should expect and based on that, this is what.
Yeah. And I like to, I mean, I like to give instructions to bidders as to what system size we think makes the most sense. And then it never be like I said before, sometimes people take artistic license and say, no, this is, you know, this is possible. But then I have to go back in and say, well, not exactly, and here's why. So, um, we can, you know, we'll get through some of this, um, as we go, but again, using like a standard metric, the most standard metric I have short of telling everybody explicitly, hey, design your system to be exactly 4.6 or 4.5 megawatts. Um, cause it, you know, I like to give vendors at least some, some ability to weigh in knowing that I don't know everything. And if somebody has an idea that might be more beneficial than something that we saw or an idea that we had, I don't necessarily want to shut that out. an idea that we had, I don't necessarily want to shut that out. But I feel like we're still able to, you know, evaluate fairly and give good guidance to the town based on the results that come in.
And is that company you're displaying our, our four lease familiar to us? Companies that we use in the area? Are they, you know, on job sites here in the area that make, like, additional information to happen?
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, getting into some of this too, I mean, there's, I've included a write-up in here, basically like a matrix comparing all these companies to, to each other, giving a baseline of, you know, what size, location, experience, all these types of things I think are really important generally when, you know, municipalities are making this, 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 which vendor to use. Just, you know, getting into basics and sort of flesh some of this out. Keersage is a Massachusetts-based company.
Could you just read the names on the left-hand side?
Sure.
I'm going to make copies for you.
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought that would be helpful. I can read the numbers, but I can't read the names. So.
Sure, sure. So Davis Hill, Verge, Keersage, and Green Skies.
Verge?
Keersage is K-E-A-R-S-A-G-E.
And the last one?
Green Skies.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, everyone.
That's okay. So Keersage, Massachusetts-based company, they've developed landfills in Massachusetts and New York, but they have not developed in Connecticut. They've only done one project in Connecticut of the scale on a green field, which is a different animal. Green Skies has done a number of landfills in Connecticut and outside of Connecticut. They've also done a lot on the Cape and in Martha's Vineyard, which I want to just call attention to because a developer with experience around, you know, wetlands and water sheds and things like that, that was really important to folks in town. So I want to make sure that any bidder that we would recommend could demonstrate that they have, you know, that kind of capability. And that, you know, my intent was to get more into the weeds with each individual site and each individual proposer's qualifications as we went through. So this is really just, you know, a landing page is sort of an overview of the top bid results for all of them. It's just sort of like a Reader's Digest version of some of the stuff that I plan to go through. It might be a little tough to speak to the slides because I'm going to zoom back out.
We'll get copies in a second and then.
Okay.
Just kind of look at it.
Yeah, because some of this is going to be challenging. So just in going, you know, through proposer, my proposer here, we'd instructed bidders to size their system a certain way, obviously leaving room for the bidders to propose the systems that they felt the most comfortable with, or the ones that they thought made the most sense for the town. In this particular case, company Verge moved kind of in the other direction and went with a smaller system. They had some concerns about, you know, where exactly the easement is with Eversource and the three-phase power lines that run through. The maps that I have show a much tighter easement than the ones that they were using. And even if that is the case, there is an ability to, you know, basically get like an encroachment permit to get closer to those lines. So I don't think with how restrictive they, they take this project, I think, you know, with the economic value being, you know, sub $40,000 a year, isn't personally not the approach I would take. Verge is a fine company. They're based in West Hartford. They've been in business since 2017. I've worked with them before on other landfill projects, Monville and Deep River Two, that actually just got energized. But they were all sub one megawatt, which is, you know, roughly what they wanted to do here. Another reason this is just conjecture on my part, I can't, you know, this isn't something that they've said to me, but the way that the RFP was written and what the town has expressed to me that they'd like to do is, before fully committing to a developer and committing to a project, taking the steps necessary to at least submit into the incentive program and apply for interconnection. Those two things are really important because A, for the incentive, without that, you don't have the financial revenue coming, the revenue coming in for the project to make sense. So that's crucial. And second, applying for interconnection on the three-phase line that runs through that property, basically the way you should think about that is valuable real estate. Right now, that line is green. Connecting to that line is very, very low cost. If folks in the area wanted to connect to that line and they get there first, all of a sudden, your project costs are going to go way up. So.
Is that your position that you're going to take solar and tie them into the high-power, high-tension wires that cross that?
So into the distribution system.
That's the high-power tension wire in that easement area?
We're going to connect, the, the actual distribution wires, I think we're going to piggyback on those to get to the distribution.
Okay. Because I've done the analysis on the site and you can't, if you don't have enough solar on that property to tie into those wires, you have to go out to one of the streets.
Yeah, to the, to the distribution system, not the high tensions, not the high voltage wire.
And you know what the limitation is out on Route 20?
We know that's a red line on Route 20, but the line that goes the other direction.
Yeah. So there, there is green line interconnection. I've checked the DG maps. It's green. It's, it should be low cost. And we want to make sure that we can apply into it. So we grab that before or something. And if Eversource were to come back and say, hey, sorry, your interconnection costs are actually two or three X what we thought, then we haven't, the town hasn't bound itself to anything with the developer. And that's really what we want to try to get to with this phase is the interconnection and the incentives. Without either of those, you don't have a project. So.
Right. But your interconnection, I'm just trying to understand where you're going to connect to Eversource. That's the biggest issue I see because out on Route 20, the maximum connection and production that you could put into that system is 0.2 kilowatt, megawatt. That's the maximum. So I don't, your system here can't go out through Route 20. So I'm trying to understand what system you're running on and how.
Yeah. And what I can do is I can pull up the DG map once I get through this somewhere. I can show you. But just my other point about Verge is, you know, where this all comes together with applying for the incentives and then the interconnection application that they're like that. It's a pretty significant financial outlay for any developer to get into the Enrez or SCAP program. For a system, you know, the multi-megawatt, it could be, you know, north of $100,000 up to, you know, $120,000 for them to put the down payment on their, their, what's called a bid assurance to get into the program, which is obviously a pretty high price tag. And smaller developers or developers that, you know, may not have a taste for that kind of risk, may very well propose a smaller system to try to mitigate that for themselves. A lot of developers will do it. Others won't unless they have a binding lease agreement with, with the town. But just given, you know, the town's appetite for this project and, and moving it in a pace that doesn't commit it to something too soon, what we're looking for a developer to do is shoulder that risk, take the risk of applying for interconnection, applying into Enrez or SCAP. And while that is going on, once we get that information back, you know, and acceptance or into the program and the interconnection costs, then that puts the town in a much better position to execute a binding land lease agreement with the developer at that point. So we're trying to do everything in order here to make sure that, you know, we're, we have all of the relevant pieces put together prior to a land lease being executed.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, it came up, it came up the other day too. Just how are you paid? Are you paid through CCM?
Yeah. So in this, in this process, we have a bid management fee that is covered by the developer that you choose. It's equal to 3% of the project cost.
Okay.
So that's paid in increments in thirds. One being when you get an Enrez or a SCAP award. The second one, when you are shovel ready. So you can actually, you're ready to build a project. It's probably, like I said, about 18 months out from now. And then the third and final payment back to us is when the system hits PTA. So we're incentive, incentivized and onboard through this process, start to finish, to see it through. And all of that taken into account here is, is backed into the lease rates that folks are offering. So.
Just to follow up on that, that's not paid by the town?
No.
That's paid by the contract.
Right. I didn't know CCM paid you or how that works.
No, 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 directly, yeah, whoever wins this bid.
Well, a contractor will get his money too. Right? I mean, he pays.
Yeah, but I mean, for doing the RFP work.
Yeah.
Nothing comes out of the town property.
Correct.
Right.
Even if we go through this entire process and ultimately the town would have decided didn't want to move forward. I haven't had that happen yet, but. So did everybody have a copy now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So maybe we'll, you know, just strain your eyes.
In the room, people have a copy, but online, we'll post it.
Okay. I'll keep going online as if we're all kind of collectively moving through this together. But at least now, you don't have to try to strain your eyes and see what's on the screen. So if you go to the Davis Hill slide, there were a few things about their proposal that weren't going to work. The lease rate was, you know, was, was low. But some of what they did here just wouldn't fly from a permitting basis. You know, one example of that being, if you look at the far left corner, that's smaller of the two systems that they have designed. I mean, that's directly over wetlands. And I'm not sure why they wouldn't have caught that. Just kind of speaks to being a little sloppy, if you ask me. Also, they're lacking the necessary access paths through this large section of arrays as well. So again, if we're thinking about mitigating permitting risks and having to, you know, not redesign projects and things like that, I mean, these are just sort of errors or oversights that, to me, don't really speak to, you know, an ideal partnership. And they, as a company, they've developed landfills in other states, but they have not developed a landfill in Connecticut. As I said before, I'm personally of the opinion that the relationships and the, the know-how dealing with the Siting Council and DEEP, having done this before in Connecticut, is a really important thing. So I naturally kind of put companies that haven't done that at a disadvantage. But even still, the lease rate was low. It, it wasn't a contender for the top spot, even if they'd addressed some of these other aspects that would be problematic ultimately. The next page, move from there. I guess I can zoom this out if anyone hears this here. So Keersage is, they're, you know, a medium-sized company. They're based in Boston. Primarily, their landfill experience is Massachusetts and New York. They have not developed a capped landfill in Connecticut. They've done a green field in the town of Durham. So they would have a little bit of, you know, experience working with the Siting Council, but likely not any with DEEP. And there were a couple of things about this offer that were problematic. And one of them, I just, I felt like since it was the most realistic contender to Green Skies, that I wanted to just kind of dive into some of the issues with the array itself. And they had proposed something, a structure that, you know, overly, in my view, overly complicated and actually couldn't even be done just based on some of the rules with, with Enrez and how we would size a project. So I won't get into all the specifics because it would, it would be a rabbit hole. But the single biggest issue that I found with their, their project was that it was oversized. And by a fairly significant amount. I mean, it was pushing, definitely pushing the boundaries well past anything that I would feel comfortable recommending for the town in terms of, you know, of size. And just, I guess, just to get right to the point, if you flip to the next page, I just, you know, wanted to call out some very basic things that would be flagged and would need to be addressed immediately. You know, not the least of which being, you know, they're encroaching on wetlands. You know, they, the wetland setbacks are just, they're not going to fly. So any panels that are within those circles, those would need to go. I felt like they were getting uncomfortably close to the power lines on property. I just put, you know, yellow lines where they, they should have, you know, code-required access paths for a system of that size. Like, you can't just have a big, for lack of a better word, blob of solar panels without access roads, kind of north, south, east, west. So they had, they had an access path kind of on the most eastern corner, but definitely not sufficient and, and wouldn't have met code because it was just too far to the east. If you were to reduce the system size and make these changes, I put, you know, 20% reduction, 15 to 20% reduction in system size, which would have a commensurate effect on the lease rate that you'd get. So between the experience factor, lack thereof, and some of these issues with the design, you know, it wouldn't be my first one. So moving to Green Skies. So they, they were the most compliant with the instructions which I gave, which were provide a scenario for Enrez and for SCAP. I don't know why nobody else did that, but they, they did. And essentially what you're seeing here is the lease rate per megawatt, and then the total year one lease value back to the town, and then extrapolate it out over 20 years with the values you're given there. In terms of Green Skies, just generally, they've developed a number of landfills in the state. I've worked with them before, working with them right now on projects in the West here, and that's just about to get instruction. They've built East Haven and North Haven. And they built the single largest project in Connecticut, which is located in Waterford. They've been in business for about 15 years. So as long as anybody here in the state, they've got a ton of experience with the Siting Council and with DEEP. And I think they're well-suited to a project like this. And they're willing to do, you know, certain things that I think are, you know, are important to the town. Non-binding LOI, obviously, and taking on the risk of applying for Enrez and interconnection.
What does LOI stand for?
Letter of Intent.
Okay.
So many, we can agree that we're going to go in there and then, okay.
With a letter of intent.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, the letter of intent. So basically what, the instruction we gave developers is, if the town were to decide to pick one of these options, from a contracting perspective, all they, that company would need to get their application into Enrez would be something like a letter of intent. Something that shows, you know, some expressed interest on the landowner's side of things. Just as it means to make sure that these applications are, you know, they're actually real, there are landowners involved. Spacing these programs is really tight. So they try to make the bar high, both with the requirement for, you know, something like an LOI and also with the assurance deposit. But yeah, this is where maybe the conversation gets a little bit nuanced between, do you go Enrez? Do you go SCAP? How do you fit into either program? But as far as the lease rates paid per megawatt, Green Skies had the highest offer. And from a qualification standpoint, I would argue that they are the, you know, the most qualified. Did include the layout for, you know, for their system here. Again, just trying to make sure we're checking some of the boxes in terms of, you know, setback requirements, access paths, being mindful of, you know, wetlands and watersheds and things like that. The one thing, and other developers, Kirsage would have had to do this too, but Green Skies called this out. And again, just something for the town to be aware of. This western portion of the project would require some tree clearing about, you know, roughly an acre's worth of stuff, just to prevent shading issues on that side. Generally speaking, the idea here is to keep the site as, you know, preserved as possible. I know we get a lot of questions too about, you know, the racking and things like that. So there's, this is a 100%, any developer would do this. This would be a 100% ballistic system, so everything stays above ground. You know, the name of the game here is definitely don't disturb the cap. And that's, you know, precisely what all these developers, even for some of their oversights, if, you know, putting, designing over wetlands. I mean, obviously somebody would have caught that eventually or whatever, but it's a very standardized process. And this is something, again, the site and council, deep are intimately involved with the permitting and evaluating the racking style that these developers are using and making sure that, you know, they're going to hire, you know, third party engineers on their part to ensure that the cap can withstand, you know, added weight and things like that. So there's a lot of checks and balances that go through here. That Green Skies or any developer that you pick is going to, they'll have to contract or outside third party engineering services to verify all this. And that's by those evidence when they go in front of the site and council. Just some other ancillaries. You know, they're willing to give the, the contracts for lawn care and maintenance services to the town, should the town want that. Just as, you know, a way to, to kind of help increase some of the financial value. They are offering a system decommissioning bond for the end, you know, the end of the life cycle of the project. And I'm not sure if, you know, folks have a question. Yeah.
So, so on your decommissioning bond, none of the other companies are offering that? And number one, and number two, is that bond that we would be charged more for if we opted for that? Just for example, at the end of the 20 years, no one else is offering to bond the money for the removal of the.
Well, we wrote it into the RFP that everybody had to price it into their, into their offer.
Okay, so that's our, but the only one that shows, it says they're offering a decommission, a system decommissioning bond. They're all offering that?
That was written into the RFP itself that everybody would have to do it. I, when I went through the RFP results, the only other company that mentioned it was Kirsage. So unless it, the Davis Hill and Vergey just ignored the request or just didn't mention it in their response.
We would have to make sure it was in the contract.
Yeah.
So how could they even be considered?
Right, you gotta ask, right?
I don't understand how they're considered if they're not willing to put the money up for the removal, i.e. the company goes out of business and the town has 50 acres or whatever it is, eight acres of solar farm that we now have to get rid of. I would think that if they're not serious at this level, they shouldn't even be considered. It might narrow it down really easy for the town.
Well, that's what we're doing.
That's why he, he is recommending Green Skies as the company and that's why he's kind of.
But I'm just saying, we shouldn't have the other companies in there. If they're not willing to put up the money to ensure that the removal of the product is guaranteed at the end, that we don't get stuck with another bill at the end of service.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, I think these are precisely the reasons why, you know, we write the RFP, because that's important, right? I mean, that's a critical piece.
Absolutely.
Of what somebody should be able to bring to the table as a vendor.
Very standard practice. Down with their share of RFPs myself.
Yeah.
And to go back, I mean, this frankly happens all the time. They all miss something, they all add something you didn't ask for. They all don't answer.
You don't mind them missing something, but not something as important as what happens at the end of this. Because it's a 20-year commitment.
Yeah, of course.
Then 20 years goes by pretty quick and then that company's not here. What do we do with it?
I guess what I would say too is like, when I'm sitting in the evaluation seat and I see, let's say, okay, in this case, we have four, four vendors responding. And two of the four don't, really don't have a chance at the top spot. It's almost like if you're counting electoral college votes and it's already mathematically impossible for a candidate to win, you kind of stop counting. A little bit like that, I think. Even if Vergey and Davis Hill did in fact price that bond into their numbers, it's kind of a moot point because they were so far below where Kirsage or Green Skies would be. If you have like a neck and neck situation where like you're looking for a tiebreaker or there's some critical piece where like, okay, they forgot this, it could swing in somebody's favor because of that. I mean, those are the sort of things that like, they become more material when it's like, you've got four perfectly equal options and you're just looking for like one reason to go one way or another.
I have one other question.
Sure.
So nationally, we may not be looking as a, as a, as a wanting to invest as much in green clean energy, unfortunately. Is there the potential, since you said this is a process that could take one, two, maybe two years, three years, whatever? Are you considering at all that the, the value of the project could decrease if there's not as much incentives in government funding towards green energy? Would that change the numbers significantly?
So this is sort of a million dollar question because clearly all of these projects, whether they're on a homeowner's roof, project like this, school, small business, whatever, they all rely really heavily on a few things. The local incentives, which, you know, state, state stuff, which is SCAP and NRES in this case. And then nationally, the, the biggies, the investment tax credit is part of the inflation reduction act. What's interesting about the way that the rules are written now is that a developer only needs to spend 5% of the project cost to lock in the ITC value for themselves for four years. It's a pretty low bar. And I'm trying to, you know, gauge, not just with, you know, industry colleagues and stuff like that, but developers and the folks who are at these companies who are responsible for making investments in, in projects like this, to really like kind of take everyone's temperature on that issue and see like, how do you feel? Like, what's your confidence level? And, you know, obviously watching what's going on in Washington, things, you know, can be a little bit unpredictable these days. But the Inflation Reduction Act so far has been outside the conversation of, you know, cost cutting and, you know, tinkering with things that the previous administration did. My personal belief based on that is the reality is that the Inflation Reduction Act benefits red states and blue states alike. So, you know, it's, it's a popular program. There would be an ungodly slew of lawsuits and things if it were just pulled. And based on IRS rules, I mean, you hit that 5% threshold and you're good. The things that worry me a little bit more would be like block of tariffs between, you know, countries and how that could potentially impact project costs. Because inevitably, all of the components, whether they're assembled, you know, here or there, they, they kind of come from everywhere. So it's hard to escape, you know, if there's like a broad trade war. Solar components are not going to be spared in that. This is where I come back to like, okay, if you have to pick a partner, how do you kind of weigh your risks with that? And I'd rather be partnered with a much larger company with deeper pockets that could likely withstand some changes in the dynamic of like equipment pricing and things like that. I think Green Skies is well positioned to do that. But, you know, time is, like most things, you know, time's a little bit of the essence here just because we do live in a kind of an uncertain environment. I'm not concerned about the timeline now. If we were to apply into SCAP and NRES, get an award, start moving down the path. I know Green Skies is gonna, you know, move like, you know, like, like the wind here. Try to get everything locked down so that they can get their project costs dialed in and secured. But I can't tell you it's not, it's not a risk at all. There's, you know, we're all kind of at the mercy of, who knows, things we can't control.
We have a question online.
Sure.
From Fran Nesbaum, I'm not sure of her address. Does East Granby need to have a vendor send a letter of intent to DEEP and council to hold the green line? Or is it an application to Eversource?
So the letter of intent would go to NRES or SCAP. There's an interconnection application for reserving your spot on the grid. So there are, they are separate. Although for the interconnection application, you do need to demonstrate some form of site control. Again, just to prevent developers from trying to claim spots on a grid where they shouldn't be. So, you know, dual purpose, I would say that that LOI would suffice for that evidence of site control. Anything less than that, I think Eversource could kick it back and say, it's not really substantial enough to prove kind of site control.
I have a question about the LOI. I should have asked you earlier, but, um, so we had a public meeting about this, about perhaps selling the, the capped landfill. And there was a lot of backlash in case the, the cap was disturbed. What happens if, so I know we're looking to make a decision tonight on the letter of intent. What happens if after we sign that letter, there's like this uproar and people don't want to do it? Just hearing from the public.
Sure.
We get it. So do we lose anything at that point?
Your, the town's commitment, like the binding commitment that the town is going to make when, or when, when that becomes an option is when you have an actual land lease agreement in front of you. Obviously reviewed by an attorney and, you know, if you're comfortable with that. That's the point at which you've created, you know, a binding relationship between yourselves and.
But their letter of intent, we could walk away from. Walk away from.
Exactly.
And not lose out on any.
Non-binding can be terminated by both sides, either side.
Even if we wanted to do somewhere, solar somewhere else?
Yep.
It doesn't put us like on the bad list. We want to do it somewhere else.
No, I mean, you know, I think, you know, for everybody's sake, you know, going through the steps with the LOI and applying into NRES or SCAP, if I'm thinking like the developer who has to ultimately write the check for the insurance deposit, the bad scenario for them is they do that and they get an award. Because once you get notification that you've gotten an award, then you basically, you have to like certify and like claim it. If they don't, if they get the award but decline it, they don't get their insurance deposit back, which is, would sting. So I think, you know, for their part, they, you know, they want to make sure that there's at least a reasonable degree of confidence that the town, you know, wants to pursue this further. It's entirely possible you could bid into NRES or SCAP and not be selected and then have to do it again in August.
Right.
So, you know, but the thing about NRES and SCAP is the more at bats you get, the, the greater likelihood that you're going to hit the ball, I'm sure. You know, I've had some clients that wanted to bid into the program a little bit higher than I would have, you know, otherwise liked. And that just means, you know, if you swing and miss, you gotta just be ready to do it again. The single biggest thing though is, is interconnection. Because that's, when I think of like what, what derails projects more than anything is Eversource coming back and saying, you know, no luck here. Or it's going to be extraordinarily expensive. And all of a sudden, your project cost economics have completely changed.
Right.
And that's why developers want to try to get to the answer as soon as possible. And, you know, claim that spot for themselves, so.
Adding two things, just as a reminder to everyone, that because it is a brown field, we get a 20% bid preference. So that's to our benefit as it, because it's on a brown field.
Correct, so SCAP and NRES, they favor, they favor two, two types of projects. One, brown field, so capped landfill, contaminated land, et cetera. And then projects that are located in distressed municipalities. East Granby is obviously, you know, it's not on that list. So those benefits aren't additives. You can't like stack, you can't staff them. So if you, if you have one, that's fine, you don't need the other. But the market dynamics within SCAP and NRES have become such where you basically can't even get a place in the program unless you have brownfield status or distressed meaning status. So if you guys, let's say for instance, East Granby had a, a patch of land adjacent to this, that said, ah, we don't want to do the landfill, you know, use this. Unless you had a distressed municipality that was earning the lion's share of the revenue from the project, you just, you wouldn't be selected, you wouldn't have the necessary advantage to do it. So brownfields, and that's, this is where the state wants to see them stand. That's why they give the bid preference as opposed to greenfields and farms. And they're not even allowing, nor should they, I think. They're not even allowing like clear cutting force and stuff like that for projects. They, they used to like five, seven years ago, take kind of a, a well approach to that, but it doesn't happen anymore, so.
I also just mentioned one other thing. You had put in the RFP that the solar company would need to set aside $5,000 in attorney's fees so that we would have an environmental attorney look over the contract prior to a signing. So that won't come out of the town budget, but we will have an environmental attorney. We've already been in contact with a couple, but one in particular who's worked with Titan Energy before and has done this type of contract before. And they will look over everything to make sure that it's good for the town before.
Yeah, and also the, the groundwater testing too was also worked into the RFP.
Right.
The vendor takes over that responsibility.
Is the RFP in this package?
No, it's not.
I have one question, and I think it goes a little bit to what Eden and what Mr. Lee had just talked about. One of the things when this was discussed earlier was everybody was very, very concerned about potential damage to the landfill by this whole operation. And I see there's a decommission bond, but in your RFP, I don't see, I haven't seen anybody address any type of insurance or any type of bonding in the event a windstorm comes in and this whole thing lifts up and takes the cap off. And we now have a catastrophic event over at the dump and it now pollutes everybody's well and the whole town. As they were, some of the dissidents who were talking about at the last meeting. The question becomes, to what extent do you and your, your solar people have that kind of insurance or coverage or bonding that would cover that in the event that this operation damages the dump?
Sure.
Can I, I can talk to that a little bit?
Oh, sure. If you want to.
Well, because we, Eden and I have talked about it a little bit as well. You know, first of all, I think the main thing, having the town do the mowing, so we are in control of who's on that property in general. I think it's important that we're the ones in control of it, it's still under town control. The, one thing when we had talked with the environmental attorney was to make sure that they were looking over what kind of a policy. Green Skies has as far as an insurance policy. And then he talked about also us looking into a pollution and legal liability policy and making sure that during construction in particular, that we have extra coverage because that would be the most likely scenario would be when there's construction happening, that something could go wrong. He also advised, I think one thing we are going to need to talk about is whether we really do want them to do the testing or not, we may just want that to stay in the town's hands, just so we have control of that at all times. Or that we're always getting a copy of that report because it has to be done on a biannual basis. So, you know, we certainly started those talks, but that would all have to be firmed up before we sign the contract.
Yeah.
You have more, certainly talked to it though.
Yeah, and I mean, I specify minimum $10 million across the board policy for anybody that's going to bid on this project. And I'm highly confident that almost every developer who responded has even better coverage than that for stuff like this. coverage than that for stuff like this. Um, you know, obviously a huge concern and, and, you know, something to be addressed. You know, the reality with the equipment is, everything's above ground. It's rated for, you know, 170th mile an hour wind, so, you know, generally is a pretty low, low occurring event in this part of the country, I think. Um, everything above the dirt, all their equipment, all their responsibility. Generally, the way these are treated, that everything below the dirt would be the responsibility of the town. Again, deep's going to be heavily involved here. One question I've gotten before though, which I think is, you know, is, is just worth bringing to this conversation too, because it could just be another, another way to tighten up the agreement in a way that, you know, is, is good for the town, would be that if for some reason that the town had to do work on the cap, and it required, you know, moving some of the panels, you know, temporarily, obviously, um, that it wouldn't be an out-of-pocket cost for the town to do that, but Green Skies or any developer would basically recoup their losses by just, you know, calculating what the damages were for them and then recouping that before the rent payments kick back in again. Because I think, you know, the name of the game here for the, for the town is, you know, insulate yourself from costs everywhere that you can, so this is just...
Safety.
Backside, yeah.
So, if that's the case, then the insurance that you're talking about, the construction insurance and even insuring it after the fact, that would all be part of what the developer would pay and not the town. Because as he's saying, we don't want to incur those costs.
Yeah.
So, is that in this bid process, that they're going to cover us with testing and cover us with construction insurance and all of those things in their expectation and the numbers that they've provided to you?
I can...
In there already?
Yeah, so again, I give, I give minimums for what people need to hold for, you know, insurance for this and from everything I've ever seen, solar companies go well above and beyond, you know, that $10 million mark. And they will definitely have insurance through the construction process. I can ask them specifically what their policy entails. Um, you know, every responsible solar developer is going to want to make sure that they're insured for their own reasons too, not just, you know, out of goodwill for the town. So...
I mean, that may change our number, right? Based on what the environmental attorney advises us to do and what's for the safety of the town, so I think, no matter what, that may change...
If they advise a supplemental policy for some reason, I mean, I can get from, through these guys, exactly what their coverages are, and if, if your folks look at that and say, hey, we feel like this is insufficient for some reason, then we figure out, you know, what would make it sufficient for the town. Is there a cost to that? Who bears it? And, you know, go from there.
Yeah. I think that's a nice thing of working with a, a company that has, has done this on many brownfields already, so they have the experience and, and they've been through this process many times. Also, working with a environmental attorney who also has done this before and works through the contracts, so we're working with a lot of people who have experience and hopefully, you know, can guide us in the right direction and get us what we need to keep it safe.
I have another question from someone online, Jeff Heck. Does it impact the bids since some of the solar would not be on the town field, on the brownfield?
Um, so, as long as 70% is on brownfield, you get the preference.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Oh, okay.
That's it online.
Okay.
Did you have any more before we kind of...
I have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
So, this little thing in the back of my head is, Verge had commented that their concern was about that map and maybe, they feel that the, the area is not as large as the other companies, but is there any, so, so if they're right, then all these...
You can apply for an approach permit, I think they just, again, my, my feeling is on it that if I'm kind of reading between the lines and I know the kind of projects that Verge would like to build, just from having worked with them before, like the mega water below landfills, um, I think the LOI requirement, the non-binding nature of that and the $100,000 plus assurance deposit probably was factoring into that more than anything. Um, just a guess, I mean, I've looked at the maps myself and, um, even, you know, there are ways to address that. What ultimately is going to happen here, the Connecticut Siding Council and deep are going to dictate what you can do and what you can't do. And again, the idea here is to get the biggest system that you possibly can, because that's A, how you're probably the most successful in Enrez or SCAP.
I know what we want, I understand that. I'm just saying, sometimes when one guy, sometimes there's like, hmm, we need to make sure that they're not looking at something that the others that actually just missed.
Yeah. I mean, I discussed it with them and, and went over what they were looking at, and I personally didn't feel that a little bit concerned. Um, and even, you know, if they're remotely right, there are ways to deal with that which are completely feasible and, you know, a developer that's willing to put, roll up their sleeves and get it done will be able to do. Um, let's see. My computer battery is, what do I got here?
Do you need to clean the papers?
Uh, I'm at the tail end here though, so this, I think, I think we're good. And again, this is sort of just a write-up for folks who, this is basically everything that we've talked about here, just trying to do like a Reader's Digest version for people who might come across this document, uh, without, you know, my, uh, commentary on it.
Your commentary, honestly, on Verge was so good, is what made me kind of, you know, a little bit of a concern about like, why are we overlooking them? Like maybe, maybe there's something more for them, that's all.
Well, let's, even if, if we play that out to its, to its extreme, right? Like, so, even if Verge is right, it would be the case for any developer. So, I come back to again, who's willing to pay the highest lease rate per megawatt?
But if they can't make it as big as they think they're going to make it, I assume they don't pay that same lease rate, or that's incorrect.
Right.
So, what's interesting about, and this is where we get into a little bit like some nitty-gritty about how Enrez works.
Yeah.
So, Enrez has categories of size large, small, medium, large. The price cap, basically, that's like the ceiling where like you can't bid higher than that. The price cap for the medium program is substantially higher than it is for large, and I think that's just because, you know, their, their program feels like the larger projects don't need as much support, so their cap is lower. Any of these developers who would then make the leap from the large program or category to the medium, would then also be able to bid much higher than they intended otherwise. In which case, I'm very, very confident that the Green Skies or even like the Kiersey could improve their lease rate, simply because the incentives are richer in the medium category than in the large. But taken as a whole, you're much better off going for the larger project, from a just a net half floor basis. It's significantly better financial outcome.
I mean, obviously, yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, totally. I mean, if, if they were on to something, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't waste, you know, anybody's time here or mine trying to, because at the end of the day, I mean, the, the system that can be built here, you know, it's... When I, you know, like I get in these situations with like the medium versus the large, a lot of times what happens is that people feel like they're sort of on the cusp like one way or another. They tend to defer to medium because they can get more incentive for the project. Um, I'd much rather try to go the other direction, try to maximize the site as much as you can, even if that pushes you into the large category, which is much more competitive and you have to bid lower. I think the outcome is potentially far greater. The other thing I could do, if it was, um, interesting for folks, is I could go back to, let's say like Kiersey or Green Skies and say, hey, if you were to bid into the medium category, what would your lease rate be? At least that way you'd have it as a frame of reference.
I missed what the exact question was, but someone's asking, they missed it too. What the exact question, um...
Yeah, why Verge opted to go smaller rather than larger?
Okay, right.
Yeah.
I think, she just had her time hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um...
So, is there an appetite for that, is his question to us?
Right. Is it, is it...
Just for sake of argument to have, I mean, I can always get that number to see...
Do it, okay.
If, if you downsize to medium, what's your lease rate per megawatt?
But that doesn't affect our letter of intent, so we can still move forward with that.
Right.
Wait, how, how does that not impact that?
Yeah.
So, if the other company came back and like, it would be different, it wouldn't affect?
Because it's a non-binding letter of intent, so we could change after if that was something.
So, the other thing too, just again, to keep in mind is, um, Verge's offer per megawatt, installed megawatt, even in the medium category, was still lower than Green Skies in the large. So, logically, I mean, to me, it would seem that if Green Skies, just as a, for instance, wanted to downsize and get into the medium, that just means they've unlocked more incentive for themselves. I would have a hard time seeing them then be under Verge, if that makes sense, because then they, they're in a different bracket where they can get more money from the utility. It's just, I mean, I've seen this kind of play out before and that's, when projects downsize into the medium category, all of a sudden their lease rate per megawatt goes up, but you're stuck at this ceiling of a megawatt where like, you've got underutilized space here. So, I view this as, you know, my job being trying to maximize, you know, within reason, obviously, trying to maximize the, the value of the land for the town. Um, but I could certainly ask, just to verify, if I'm, if I'm wrong, then, you know, um, maybe it's, you know, something to revisit, but I have a pretty good feeling that, given how these programs work, if Green Skies downsizes, they then unlock a bigger pool of money for the incentives for themselves and would probably pay just as much or more as...
Their lease rate is higher anyway?
Right, and their lease rate is higher anyway, even with the disadvantage of being in the large program over the, the medium.
So, is this considered a large?
Mm-hmm. Anything up to between one megawatt and five, so...
One megawatt of solar panels or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, so one megawatt's the, the actual capacity of the project itself, its ability to generate power.
Right, and so the lease rate is what they pay East Granby for each megawatt?
Right.
And the total year? What does that mean?
Um...
Total year dash one value?
Oh, so just what you would make your one?
Okay, because that's an estimate on how much would be provided?
Based on the system size.
Yeah, and then the lifetime value is what?
Just 20 times that.
20 times that?
It's 20-year lease.
So, okay. We need a large one?
I mean, you know, if, if you're going to do it...
Well, I guess I have a question. My name is Betsy Tumalones for, maybe you, Eden. What benefit does the, um, the community have from this?
You would get a credit towards the town's Eversource bills.
Well, no, the, the, the lease revenue, that's what you get, yeah.
The lease revenue.
And then that would be passed on to the taxpayers?
If we could pay, or we could...
Hopefully, they'll...
Sure, right. We could pay it towards our Eversource bills, yeah.
No, I know, but would that...
So, we would actually see the impact?
You would see the impact on the budget, you would have much less, or wouldn't we have to pay something for this as well? I mean, does it balance? There's no payment?
No.
Okay.
So, it would...
Unless you have insurance.
Unless you have to pay insurance?
Right.
Which is always a good thing to have.
It's like a rent.
Yeah.
Like, you, the rent, for a year, and you get to use that money anywhere you want.
Okay, good.
Right, if we choose to pay, our bills are...
Well, hopefully, it'll be passed on to the taxpayers.
That's the goal.
Well, yep, I hope so.
That is the goal.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, times like this...
2027.
Oh, my God, then you'll be like, oh, my gosh, we have so many more expenses.
It's a, um, two, about a two-year beginning to end project.
Yeah, and that's really just a function of the work and role that, you know, going through Siding Council and dealing with deep. Deep is, they'll tell you, you know, six months until they even talk to you for the first time.
Right.
So, it's, uh, yeah.
So, just from looking at this quick, if you're taking average time, the companies have been around, just call it 2015, why are no other local landfills, or are there other local landfills, they're taking advantage of this?
Oh, I mean, I could at least just rattle off the ones that I've worked on.
In the area?
Yeah, um, something in the, in the area. Let me, let me give you a list of the projects I've worked on. Some of them may or may not be, I'm just going to shoot them from memory here, and a lot of them are W's for whatever reason. Um, Weston, Wilton, Wyndham, West Haven...
Montville, right?
Montville.
Deep River.
Deep River.
Waterford.
Well, I didn't do Waterford, that was Green Skies. Um, I know, uh, Green Skies did East Haven, uh, North Haven, Middletown just completed theirs.
That's good.
Okay.
I want to get into the Rs.
Yeah, I know, I don't know, I don't know if there's more W towns in Connecticut or if I have just weird luck. A lot of W, W towns. Um, and, you know, not all landfills are, are actually suited for this, and, you know, we've, we've come across landfills that, um, weren't properly capped. Um, we've come across landfills where the town really didn't do maintenance, they got trees grown in places where they shouldn't be grown. Um, there's a mix of things. I mean, this is a really clean one, you guys are taking, you know, good care of it. Um, from everything I've been able to deduce, it was capped properly. You know, you're in good standing with deep, obviously, if you're doing the testing. Um, that's, I mean, those are the sort of criteria we look for, uh, you know, for a project like this.
Do you want to go over some more of that?
Say again.
Did you want to go over some of the, some more of the...
Yeah, I mean, just general, you know, timing, um, SCAP and Enrez awards, you know, they, they're, it's currently open. SCAP closes on the 5th of March, Enrez closes on the 17th. Um, my personal advice to the town so far has just been to go with Enrez because there's a higher potential revenue opportunity in Enrez over SCAP. Um, SCAP, you know, it's, it's a good program, um, and it's been undersubscribed as of late, but it has a lower ceiling, like a lower bid cap, so you're kind of artificially constrained, I think, there. Um, and it's not to say that you couldn't apply into SCAP and then, or into Enrez and then if you weren't awarded, then you couldn't pivot and try for SCAP, you can, you can do that. I just think for the first, first time out of the gate, I would try to, you know, go with the program that has the better compensation rate, and then if you're not successful, maybe make a decision from there as to, you know, do you stick with it and bid lower or do you try for SCAP? Um, but yeah, the LOI is really kind of the, the ticket to that. Um, I did include some charts about, you know, how SCAP and Enrez have cleared over the last couple of years. Some of this is a little bit, um, a little bit technical, really just to kind of give some perspective on the bid strategy that I recommended, so I mean, we could go over that if, if folks want, or we can, you know, let that, let that go. Um, kind of just include it in there for reference.
If anyone has any questions, they can send to info@egtownhall.com and certainly we can get clarification from you.
We'll forward it to Adam.
Yeah.
We'll forward it on to you, if you can explain, if they have a question.
Sure.
The only question I have, I'm looking at your Green Skies, clean, as you quote in the picture, it says that the point of interconnection to be confirmed on site visit three base will assume that there is a 23KD. Has that been confirmed?
And this is where my internet would be super helpful.
Is it password on this one?
Yeah, this is...
It's working out. I just wanted to pull up the DG maps that show where the lines are and that the hosting capacity is, yeah. Even my personal, my personal hotspot or whatever, so...
So, we know that we can tie into that one?
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to pull up to show you the DG map.
So, Green Skies had looked at that previously, and I would assume... and I would assume the disclaimer is because somebody else could bid in before us.
Yeah, I mean, we can't control what anybody else might be doing in that environment.
And if that was to fall through or be the case that we couldn't, again, we're not on the hook because it's only an LOI.
Right, that's, that's some cost that Green Skies is willing to put a hundred-plus thousand dollars behind to, to apply.
Jason?
During the Green Skies presentation, Ryan went over, Ryan Lederer from Green Skies went over the numbers that he had from speaking with EverSource, from having the transformer right there on site, which would connect us into the power lines. So he went, he did speak with them, so he kind of.
That's right.
He went over that question during Zoom as well as the town.
Yeah, and we did look at the, the hosting and passing maps together to show the location of the line.
Yeah, that's right. It'd be like some kind of a little like box or build out here. Yeah. Thank you.
We're in some kind of luck here.
Any other questions?
This is like the traffic report for Connecticut interconnection.
We'll put all this information up on the town website if anyone wants to review over it. And certainly, if there are anybody else who has, you know, have questions, I would suggest they watch this and listen to what Ryan had today tonight and then look over the information. But certainly, we, we need to get the LOI in and although it's non-binding, I think questions sooner rather than later would be important since the Enrez deadline is March 17th. So, you know, if you guys process it and if you have questions, please, you know, ask them right away. Don't hold on to those because it's helpful for us.
I was just wondering why the lease rate is so much greater for Green Skies than the other?
Well, with Kiersecage, it was, you know, kind of, it was close. It's like trying to build anything else. It's like your cost, you know, your cost to build, your cost of money, the return that your particular set of investors want to make. I mean, it's, you know, these are not totally commoditized projects and, you know, some folks would look at a landfill from an investment perspective and probably want a greater return on that than they would a greenfield, because they figure out, well, there's, we're taking on some development risk here and, you know, by operating on top of the cap landfill. Some might feel comfortable with that, you know, some might not. You know, it's just like any, I think, any other business decision people might try to make. Taking in your, your in-book cost and the risk you want to take and coming up with a number that you feel like you can live with.
Is there any chance that that number could change?
Um, the only things that could swing it would be, you know, if the town incited that it wanted to bid more aggressively into Enrez or SCAP, then, you know, we wrote the RFP to instruct vendors for. Or, you know, if interconnection costs come back in higher than people expect.
Then the lease rate would go down?
They'd probably have to negotiate how you, you know, kind of mutually share the difference. I mean, there's a lot of development work that's still has to go into this. But none of that really gets unlocked until, you know, Green Skies has at least some, something on paper that like gives them confidence to start spending the money to do it.
And that green line is the?
Yes, local hosting capacity megawatts on that line, three and a half.
So that means you can only go up to three and a half?
That's AC, so we're working with DC. So that's right about 3.5. And that's just without upgrades, like significant upgrades. And the substation has a really, you know, strong rating and there's, what I look for also is other people that are trying to get into the queue. Right now, it's only 145 KW, so there's nothing in the queue. It's free and clear. And that's where like, if, if that, if that number falls or, or gets reduced, that's when your project costs start to go up a lot. So as sort of a defensive play, I want to try to get the town in there and be, you know, the driver's seat for that fixed capacity.
Any other questions? So tonight, we are, it's just Amanda and I tonight, so we will be deciding whether we're going to go forward with the LOI to be part of the bid process.
Do you have an LOI already proposed?
No.
You can.
Um, the attorneys, the town attorney is reviewing it now.
Yeah, you guys have the draft, you.
We have a draft, yep. He sent me a copy today and I sent it over to Scott. He's looking at it.
And you don't have it to put up on the board?
No, is it something, I can post it on the website?
Yeah, post it.
Thank you for my overall, but.
Sure. Hopefully, there wasn't complete jargon.
So you've chosen Green Skies.
That's who we target.
Yeah.
Isn't that who we were working with?
Yeah, and their presentation is still on the website too. I don't know if it's changed since.
Oh, they actually increased their offer significantly.
Okay. I had, I didn't compare it with the last.
My job here.
What was I supposed to? Yeah. Double, double what they originally wanted.
Yeah, it's amazing what happens when you put people in the tent.
I think it was important for due diligence to have you look over the different offers and, you know, you know these companies better than we do and have them all vetted for us, so, so we do the right thing for the town.
Well, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome, please. You're welcome, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, um, so I'd like to make a motion to write a.
What?
Letter of intent?
Yeah, okay, I thought I said something, okay. I'd like to make a motion to write a letter of intent for Green Skies to, um, to put in a bid for the Enrez program on behalf of East Ramby.
Yep, and the date's down, but I think it was by.
March.
Signed by March.
Signed by March 5th.
March 5th. To submit by March 7th, I think it was.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Are you in favor?
I am.
I'm in favor. Perfect. So we'll post the draft LOI and, um, once it's reviewed, I'll sign it.
Okay, next, public comment?
I think we had someone online. I don't see it now, but.
Any public comment?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you. I don't think a lot of people.
Say your name.
Say your name.
I don't think a lot of people realize how much time our commissioners and the people that sit on the boards put into this. Most of them aren't paid for it, so on behalf of all, I would say both of you.
Yep.
And I don't, oh, okay.
Hi, Kim Cole, Holcomb Street. I also want to express my appreciation to the board of the department for disengaging Titan Energy. They are certainly the subject matter experts, so I commend that. Most importantly, this land, based on this LOI in the presentation, is remaining in the town's control and there are insurances for protecting the cap and, and the town's interest. So I appreciate that. And then I just want to state with tough budget years ahead, I am pleased that the town is considering an option such as this for revenue, you know, potentially four million over 20 years versus simple one-time land sales above 50,000. So I just want to express gratitude for going this route versus others.
All right, and I don't see anything online. All right, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned at 8:10 PM. Let's just have it.